Everyone. Welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting for April 15th, 2025. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are May 20th, 2025, and June 12th, 2025, which is a Thursday. We will do a roll call attendance, starting with John.
John Giovinoli.
John Papri.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Okay. We have approval for the minutes of our last meeting held on March 18th, 2025. Could I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing that the applicant has requested be further adjourned, and I presume that's to be adjourned to our next meeting on May 20th. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So that takes us to the next item on the agenda, Valley Christian Church.
Do we need to do that by motion, or is that...
I tell you what, why don't we, please, give me a motion to adjourn that public hearing further?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good catch, Lori. Hello.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Alex Salomo, representing, from Wayland Architecture, we're representing Valley Christian Church. So a little background on what's been going on. There's a stop work order on the property right now, so we're trying to alleviate that. Basically, our plan is to put a new parking lot in the rear of the lot. There's kind of a cliff up there, and there were some trees that were cleared, which kind of triggered a stop work order. Trees were cleared, and we were allowed to do some test pits with an excavator to find out what kind of rock is up there, and if we can excavate to get it down to a grade where we could put a parking lot. So, in order to alleviate the situation, we drew up a plan, and we got on the agenda here. I know the board's not working. I think you have the plans in front of you, so it's a, I believe it's a 31-car parking lot we're showing. It's very preliminary. We're not going to have final engineering on it until we, until we actually start to excavate and know how far we can come down off the top of the hill. If it's too steep and we can't excavate at all, the rock is too hard, you know, our the backup plan would be to, to kind of landscape and make that a green space, but we would like to get a parking lot up there.
Are you going to try to excavate down to the level of the rest of the parking lot?
No, not the whole thing. So we, there's some pictures here. My judgment, we have to excavate about 10 feet off the top. It does appear to be kind of loose shale. We could get to it with the test pits, but we kind of need permission to get a bigger excavator up there to see if we can actually get down. The final design of the parking lot's going to be contingent on how far we can get down, how much pitch we have on the parking lot, of course, with the lighting, the buffer zones that are required.
So if you got the 10 feet, then what would be the elevation off the existing parking lot?
I think it's about 15 feet or something like that, 15 to 20 feet. It's maybe about 30, I have the surveys in that package there. All right, this doesn't have the topo, but we have one with the topo. Yeah, so it's, you still would have to go up a ramp up the hill. I can pass these pictures around. So you can see there's the escarpment there, so...
Just go back to the mic.
Those look solid.
Could you go to the mic? Thank you.
So we try to want to get on top of where the rock faces are, so it's about 10 feet of excavation. And if we can only get five feet, we'd pitch the parking lot, you know, to make up for that.
What would the pitch of the driveway be then?
That's not resolved yet, but it's kind of pretty steep, you know, it's, you know, you could see the one picture with the sign, that's kind of where there's like a natural kind of ramp up to where we would have to get. I'm not sure of the pitch off the top of my head.
My name is Dan Gilman, I work at Valley. So we believe that the highest point is 10 feet high, right? Not the whole thing. So there's spots that we have to try to scrape back and try to level off, so that we understand what we can, what we can build. And that's, that's kind of where we were going. We were just doing some exploratory work so we could put together an engineered plan to present here. I take full responsibility for screwing that up as far as starting the thing. I didn't, I didn't realize they couldn't do that, but so I own that. But what we'd like to do is continue that exploratory work so that we can present a plan to you guys that has the engineered pitch, drainage, you know, as he says, lighting, you know, the exact amount of parking that we can get, that kind of thing.
And how are you getting pedestrians from there? Is it going to be like a stairway or sidewalk?
Yeah, basically, there's going to be, we're thinking, a sidewalk along the roadway and then also a stairway coming down from it, but again, we really need to do exploratory work so we know where everything is and what we can do.
Right. On the preliminary plan there, we did show a staircase coming down from the parking lot. You know, there is a pretty steep cliff there, so that's going to be something we're going to have to resolve, but we need some way for pedestrians to get down from there, right?
I'm assuming you're going to need some sort of protection along the ledge there so somebody doesn't fall over.
Yeah, definitely guardrail, things that, yeah. But needs to be figured out, we just...
But when you use the term exploratory and figuring out, do you have an engineer to do a site plan as to what you're, you're looking to do as an end result? You obviously have had a stop work order, and you use this term exploratory work. There's obviously work that's taken place there that was beyond the scope of what you were permitted to do. So do you currently, have you engaged an engineer to come in there and try to understand exactly your situation now, where you would want to be, and to be able to produce a plan that we could look at that's been an engineered plan, not an explored?
Yes, yes. So before we go ahead and pay for the engineering, we want to know how much we can dig to see if this is even feasible. To answer your question, we did have the engineer that helped us with the other parking modifications. We did have him come up on the hill. You know, we spent a good hour up there. So he's retained, he just can't start work yet because we don't...
Well, I think that you're, in my opinion, putting the cart before the horse, because he would have to come in, understand what you have as a current existing condition, and then put together a plan that would fit what you have as a current existing condition and present it to us so that we could understand where the end destination is. Because I don't feel, I wouldn't feel personally comfortable saying, let's go off on this exploratory journey. That's a kind of an open-ended thing, in my opinion.
If I could add, this is kind of like going in for knee surgery without having an MRI. Would anybody do that? You don't even need the knee surgery, right? So I had recommended they go in with a geotechnical drilling probe and drill as much as they want to drill, okay? Or bring an air track in and drill as much as they want to drill and determine the amount of rock they have to see if the project's even viable.
Absolutely.
This path we may be going down may create a mess back there.
Absolutely.
And it's really not the way to proceed on a project like this.
Yeah. I mean, and again, I don't know about the rest of the board, but myself personally, I think you've like kind of stepped over a boundary. You were issued, I believe, a permit to do a certain bit of work there, but it didn't...
They were issued a permit or approval to do their parking lot improvement.
Okay, that's what I mean, so...
And they completed, and this area was...
And they moved beyond that.
So they far exceeded that.
This was green area in the last plan.
I'm sorry?
This was green space in the last plan.
Yes. Now, the other thing I'd like to just add is, the other thing to think about, cart before the horse, is they're adding 30 parking spaces, which to imply more people. You know, I don't know if DOT might have some say in terms of the entrance on 82, whether or not an improvement is necessary out there. I think it has to go to DOT, so why go down this path of digging up the place without even knowing if that's going to be...
Well, plus, there would be, you'd be adding a tremendous amount of impervious surface that would send runoff onto your neighboring properties. Well, I don't know...
Well, it would be catched on our property with drainage that the engineer designs, so, you know, it's all within the, you know, the restriction.
Hard to deal with it when you have rock, though, drainage.
You've got to step, I'm sorry, you have to step in front of the microphone.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, so up on that hill, it was a lot more weeds and trash than, not, not trash, but, you know, just trashy, natural stuff that we couldn't even walk through. So that's why we decided to like clean, clean it all out so that we can get the engineer and the architect and us up there to try to strategize and see what we can do.
But it looks like to me, I've been by there, it looks like it's been clear cut, like it's, it doesn't look like there's anything left up there. And again...
There's, there's a lot of trees and there's a lot of stuff on the right side. It's just, what we cleaned out was, you know, basically a tick-infested overgrowth, you know? We did take down some trees, but it's not like we took down 30 trees. So we, we were trying to clean it up so that we could understand better what we had. And I, and I understand your point of, you're looking at it as putting the cart before the horse, but on the, on the assumption that we would be able to do something up there, we, we really needed to clean it up, right? So that we could understand what we could do, so that we could present an engineering plan. And we did engage, like I said, the engineer and the architect, so it wasn't like we were just doing this, you know, willy-nilly or without any kind of engineering involvement.
Yeah. But, but the end result was that it did get a stop work order issued to it, because obviously there was that type of sentiment with regards to it. Because you, you don't have an engineered plan for, to go by, like, and again, we're going back to that comment you made, and please don't take this personally, but that exploratory comment, you know, when you, when you go to do something like that and there isn't an actual plan in place, this is the end result of it.
And, all right, so I apologize if I'm ignorant on, on how it goes, but, I mean, we were, we were basically just cleaning it up so that we could understand what was there, because it was very difficult to see what was there. So it's not like, you know, our intention was to, hey, let's get half of this plan done so that we, you know...
I think the next step is, because we can go around in circles, if you want to move forward the project, as I recommended previously, is you get a geotechnical assessment of what you have up there, how hard the rock's going to be, whether you're going to need to blast. There's people that can provide all this information, okay? So we're not guessing.
Right, but I...
Just go in there with a machine and start digging is maybe what they did 50 years ago, but, you know, we've come a long way.
With all due respect, I mean, if we got a machine up there and just peeled away what we could, right? Because we're not blasting. That's just not an option for us. That's too close to other people, it's, there's just too many variables to worry about blasting. So I would not recommend blasting at all. I'd rather not have the parking. What I would suggest is get the bigger machine up there so we could peel it back, so we know, all right, well, so we can peel back at the highest point, not the whole thing, but at the highest point. All right, so we can peel this back eight feet.
So to do that, you got to stump, you got to stump to do that, and then you're going to bring a big machine and try to dig down 10 feet. I mean, what you're describing is a significant amount of disturbance without an end game, you know? And then what do you do if it doesn't pan out? How are you going to restore all this? You're going to put all the dirt back, you're going to plant trees, you know?
Right.
But what are you going to do if it doesn't pan out?
Like Alex said, if...
Wait till then to figure out what you're going to do, or are you going to...
No, but we need to, I know exploratory seems like a bad word, right?
But that's exactly what you should be doing. You should be drilling and finding out what the limit of your rock is and the hardness of your rock. And have, bring somebody in who's knowledgeable to know whether or not you can dig it, or you have it...
That's still not a guarantee that you can dig it, right? I mean, it's still just a probe.
It's better than what you've got now.
But we're just...
It's what we do when we do our jobs, we do exactly that. Before we put out a job to put pipe in the ground, we go and we drill and we find out if we have rock. And how hard that rock is, can the rock be dug? I mean, we put a...
But we, we...
We don't wait till it starts digging to figure out if we can do a pipe job or not. We just don't do that.
No, but we know what rock is there. It's, it's not like there's granite under there that we'd be surprised of. It's, it's, it's all that shale that, it's been there the whole time. You could actually see...
And then just come up with a plan to dig the shale and come up with all the elevations and the slope and everything, the drainage, and then go, go dig the shale. I don't understand.
You just need to do us like a...
We can hear it twice. So say we do that, and we try to go down 10 feet...
Once you're going to approve site plan.
And we can't do that, then we have to revise the site plan again.
Right, I mean, that's kind of where I'm...
So what happens when you have a maximum grade of 10% on that driveway and you need to go down 10 feet and you can only get seven? What are you going to do then after you've already dug out seven foot of rock, you need three more, you can't get it? What's the plan then?
I mean, there's, you know, we fill in and there's retaining walls, I mean, you know...
It doesn't help you get down to three feet of hard rock.
Well, you know, we could hammer it, we don't have to blast. I mean, I think, I think it's fair to ask that we...
So if you can hammer it...
We do the work we need to do to give you guys the plan that you guys are requesting.
The work you need to do is get a drill rig or just get an approval and start digging and hammering with an approved plan?
Yeah, I think you'll find...
You can come down and see...
Because we're going to open up a can of worms here, that everybody can just go start.
Right. I think you'll find that the board would agree with that approach, that, that there's no more tearing things out and so forth. You really need to do what the town engineer suggested.
Yeah, but if I pay all this money, right, to drill the holes and they say, yeah, well, you've got shale that goes down...
Sir, I'm so sorry. I know we can hear you, but we are recording the meeting, we just need you to talk into the mic. I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sorry. So I just, you know, if we, if we have to incur this extra feat to drill down stone that we know what it is, I'm still kind of trying to wrap my head around what the benefit is. Like, other than being able to answer your question, oh yeah, well, it's shale, you know, down 20 feet, what, what then? What, like, then what is your...
Well, are you committed to get down to a certain elevation no matter how hard the rock is? Are you...
No, no, we're, no, that was part of the thing.
That's the whole point of drilling, but that's the whole point of drilling. That should answer your question. The drilling is going to tell you whether you can dig it or not.
Dan, I think what the issue is, is if you can't get down to where you want to be, then your drive, your ramp's going to have to be steeper than what's permissible, so that's going to be a problem.
Right, and we, and we think we're close now, it's, you know, I just, because it's not the whole hill that we're taking away, it's just one...
But if you're close, but we're going back and forth, either, either you can do it or you can't, right?
Sure. So I just want to kind of like, because I can see we're kind of going around in circles here.
Can you just say who you are?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm from Wayland, Wayland Architecture. So would the board, would this appease the board? Like, if we go back to our civil engineer, if he comes up with just like a basic plan, you know, with some of the drainage, with the grading, with the spot elevations that we have to be, that we have to meet to comply for a parking lot back there, without the lighting, you know, without, maybe even without the drainage, just with like a grading plan. It's like, this is what we're trying to achieve. Then we go out, we see if we can meet those elevations. If we can't, our Plan B is to, you know, reclaim that land, put it all back, you know, plant trees, plant, you know, landscaping, and bring it back to like a green space. So we got a Plan A, which is the parking lot, or Plan B, which would be the green space, would the board accept something like that, where we're not fully invested with like a geotechnical, but we do have engineered drawings?
I would think one requirement would be a bond, right? You'd have to have a restoration bond in place, we'd have to discuss that. And I think we still need to get to DOT and make sure there's not going to be any other requirements set forth by DOT before you do anything else. That would be step one.
Yeah, if there's like, if we're...
And we can't do that without an engineered plan, you know, to the DOT.
But if there's like, yeah, if we're...
And then, and the next part of it is you have to look at your drainage. You can't, you can't kick the drainage down the road, you have to look at the drainage up front.
Yeah, we can have like assume drainage right now, because we don't know, again, I'm going to use that term.
Well, you'd have it assumed, but, you know, then you ultimately have to make sure the drainage worked.
Because we did review that with the civil engineer when we were on site. So, you know, we do want to, ultimately, we do want to work with the board, you know, this is obviously like a good problem to have with this church.
Is the civil engineer willing to stamp the plan?
Yep.
That it's functional?
Because it may, yeah, he's going to, yeah, he's going to give us a design that works, but it's all dependent upon how far down we can go.
Okay, so he comes in, he gives a stamped approved plan of what potentially could function. How are you going to find out if you can get to the grade level you need to get to?
There we go.
Well, that, that's why we just, it seems like we're kind of going around in a circle. To me, I would think that there has to be some type of geotechnical test done to understand that you're going to get to the elevation. So I think that the board might be open to give some type of conditional, for them to be able to do that, to understand if they're able to get there. Is that possible?
Well, do I not understand, though, in the event that they're unable to get to that point, then they would have a bond that was put up that would guarantee that they would restore this to a green space, completely restore it?
Exactly.
So I don't know, is that, is that...
Do we deal with fill issues then at that point?
I think we have to just take a step back to the previous site plan in terms of what buffering was required for that. We'd have to have a little better...
That's the other thing, is the question...
...to restore that and mitigate that, something.
Right.
And just to give you a little history, when we did the original parking lot expansion, we did hit rock, but we plowed, you know, we plowed right through it. It came up very easily, and that's kind of like the hope here, that we've got like the same vein of rock up there, that this material can be removed.
My experience, what it's worth, I have a gentleman in Wikipedia right now who, very similar, he bought a piece of property, he saw there was rock, he started digging the rock. $100,000 later, he's almost given up hammering it because it turns to powder. Rock is like fool's gold, you can dig, and then it gets hard, and then it gets impossible. So, and that's where the bores come in, you know? You could dig down that seven feet and the last three feet, you're just making powder.
Yeah, but that, even that could be a gamble. I mean, you could dig, you know, you could have a core done...
Well, he gambled, this guy, and he's in a tough spot right now.
Yeah, sure.
And we're trying, you know, you could find yourself, and we don't want to be in the middle of that tough spot.
True. And that's why we're coming up with like a Plan B, because we may not be able to get down like another foot, and then, all right...
Because you could spend lots of money taking all that material out, money bringing that material...
More money. Have you explored, oh, I'm sorry, Scott, I apologize. Have you explored the cost of what it would be to test that?
Not yet, but...
I mean, maybe, maybe that's, you know, I know that you're talking...
Maybe the drill comes in for one day and drills all your holes.
Have we explored the drilling part?
Yeah, the, the test, the test drilling. Because alls I'm saying is, before, you know, we make a decision, or, I know that part of it, obviously, with everybody is a budget, you know? So I would, I would go out to a professional and try to understand what that cost may be, and it might be worth it to do that, instead of having a B plan that says that I'd have to restore this and post a bond and do all this stuff. And I'm, and I'm just saying that it might be worth it to understand how much it's going to cost to do that, to understand that you'll get exactly where you want to be, rather than have to go in reverse by taking away this whole thing and then having to restore it back. But the other part of it also is to understand if even the end result, if they are able to do this project completely, is it going to fit the site plan, the renewed site plan? So there's a lot of moving parts here, but the first thing I would think, and again, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but in my mind, I would say, you probably should just go out and explore what the cost would be for them to do that test for you. And if it's, if it's, you know, not, if it's prohibitive to what your budget is, then maybe this thing's just, instead of, you know, having to go backwards on it, then you just say, okay, we don't have the ability to put this in.
All right, but if, if we do, say, I haven't explored it, but say it's, I don't know, $1,000 to hire this company to do it. They drill, they affirm what we're thinking, it's, oh yeah, shale, it should peel apart, not a problem. At what point do, do, does, does the board say, yeah, this is, if, if that's the case, then based on this, this drawing that these guys put together, it looks like you guys can do this? According to, to all the rules that are, that I have no idea about, you know, because I, that was going through my mind, I'm like, well, we, we don't even know what to present to you guys.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have more information, so I present it. And then if you say, no, this isn't going to work because you're using up, you know, there's not enough drainage, you know, land or, you know, however, you know, so that's where I'm, I'm trying to like...
So the idea would be, not only they're going to drill down and tell you where the top of the rock is, they're going to drill through the rock to whatever elevation your engineer says you need to get down to, and they're going to tell you the type of rock you have, the hardness of the rock, and a recommendation whether or not it can be hammered or it has to be blasted. You're going to get a report, and then you're going to see how that, and take that to your contractor, get an estimate. I'm not here to manage the job for you, but this is the normal process, and you're going to see whether it falls in your budget or not, you know? But you're going to have all this data that right now you're flying blind on right now.
Right, but I, and, and so one step past that, so what if we say, yeah, we could do this...
All we need to see is here's the elevation we're going to come to, we want to see that. Here's the elevation, here's the slope, here's the drainage. DOT says it's okay, here's the landscape.
All right, so you guys are...
We don't care how long it takes you to hammer per se, you know? That's on, that's your budget, you know?
All right, and I appreciate that. So it might understand that if we do this, right?
But it won't cost you $1,000, I can tell you that. You're probably looking at $10,000 to $15,000 to do the...
Right. If we do this, then we come back with an engineered plan, is this something that you guys will allow, or is this something that you guys will say, well, now that we have an engineered plan, we look at it, you can't do it? I guess is what I'm wondering. Like, is that, is that an answer?
Well, you guys are going to have certain criteria, you're going to have drainage to deal with.
Part of what your engineer needs to do is look at our code and make sure that you don't have, you know, that you're not running out of pervious surface or that the slopes aren't working, and that, that's what your engineer should do for you. We'll look at the code and make sure that whatever plan you present should be within the requirements of the town code and any other law or regulation.
I think you're going to save yourself a lot of time, money, and aggravation by listening to what is being said here, because as it's going now, like, you're kind of in uncharted waters. And I think that your goal here, obviously, is to stay within a budget, and I think by the way you're doing it, you could get completely off, taken off guard by what would have to be done to restore what you're doing if you were allowed to just go off on this journey.
And, and just, just to answer part of your question, once we see the plan, we have to make sure that it, you know, complies with all the code and the zoning. But I will tell you this, there's likely to be some landscaping required, especially so that the, the property owner behind you doesn't have any visibility of the parking area, if that's, if it's, depending on where the grade lands and, and what's up there. So that'll be something that could potentially be on the site plan when you provide it, okay?
Simple buffer, so that you're, you know...
I know he has a lot of, he has like half of the hill as well, which is full of his trees, so it's, yeah, we're not messing with any of his stuff.
If it goes in this one...
All right. Well, I appreciate the board's time.
So, if, if we're gonna go ahead with a drilling program, we take that, we'll, you know, bring it to the engineer and our plans, and we would be allowed to do the drilling, though? Do we need some special waiver for that?
Yeah, we'd just like to have a heads up, so if we get phone calls from neighbors, we can say they're just, because neighbors are just gonna hear noise or think you're back to what you were doing, so, just give us a heads up that you're just doing the drilling exploratory work, and that's fine.
Okay, so that's permissible, basically, and, you know, but we can't excavate up there with an excavator?
No.
Okay. And then we take those plans, we'll have to, you know, engineer them based on the findings of the drilling, and design a plan, full nine yards with the engineering, drainage, lighting, buffering, and then present that here, and that's the way to alleviate the stop work order at that point?
You can alleviate the stop, I don't, call my office tomorrow, I don't wanna get into...
Okay, it's not a big deal, but, you know, that's one hurdle, right? That's...
But we'll work with you with that regard.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have to do now to secure what was taken out in terms of just like runoff and mud?
Uh, nothing that jumped at me, but...
Like cell fence, do they have cell fence up, like all that stuff, that would be...
Well, it kinda runs back towards their parking lot, not to any adjoining neighbors that I saw, I can give it a revisit, but we'll work through all that, we'll be cleaning up the stop work order.
All right.
Okay, we did? Okay, good. Okay, you're, you're way ahead of the game to do what I was suggesting, otherwise you can go down this rabbit hole, you know?
Dan, do you need these back?
Do you need the plans back? Pictures?
We have to look at that, though.
Thank you.
Because if that's, I don't wanna say it's a fatal blow, but I wanna...
So, the last item on the agenda is the public hearing, public comment session for the East Fishkill Comprehensive Plan that was presented to the town board on the 10th of April, and tonight is the first public hearing for that plan, and I'll ask Michelle Robbins, our town planner, to start us off.
Sure, I just wanna do, I'll do a quick introduction to the plan, and then I'll try to get us into the public comment period as quick as possible, but I just wanted to first take a step back and explain why a comprehensive plan is important to a community and what the purpose of it is, because I think that helps make, make it easier to read through it with that thought in mind. So, a comprehensive plan, first of all, is required if a community has zoning, so the last time our community went through the comprehensive planning process was 2002, so it's been a long time since we've created a comprehensive plan. Typically, or ideally, I should say, you're doing a comprehensive plan every 10 years. Most communities aren't able to do that because it is costly and it takes a long time, so you do often see them running about anywhere between 10 and 20 years. Ours has been a little bit longer than that, but we've, we've completed the process, we started it about a year and a half ago, and now we've got a draft document, so we're, we're happy to have that, the most intensive writing part completed. But why is it important to create a comprehensive plan? First of all, it provides a vision for the community, and it establishes the framework, specific goals, and the policies necessary to achieve the vision. It helps to coordinate local decision-making by providing specific goals and policies for the community, and giving the various town boards and staff a vision to align future projects. It provides guidance to property owners and developers and investors about the types of projects that are supported by the community. It provides background data such as demographic information and types of land uses, which establish a baseline for the town and informs future land use decision, meaning like changing zoning. It incorporates the recommendations and views of a broad range of stakeholders and public participants, and it helps to build a stronger community through the public process. That is an essential part of the development of a comprehensive plan. So, I just wanted to start with the vision, and then I'll go through the document really quickly. The Comprehensive Planning Committee was appointed by the town board, and it came up with a vision and a tagline, and the tagline was that East Fishkill is the junction of community commerce and country, and the vision, I'm gonna, I am gonna take the time to read it really quickly, because everything in the document is supposed to bring you back to this vision, it's supposed to ultimately lead to completing this vision. So, this document has a lot of words, it has a lot of text, it gives you some existing conditions, it gives you background on a lot of the different things going on in the town, but ultimately, the meat of the document is in the goals and the policies, which are at the end of each chapter, and those goals are, are what we're hoping to achieve, and the vision is, is being achieved through the, the development and meeting those goals. So, the vision is to develop a thriving and sustainable community within an economy that nourishes agriculture, cutting-edge manufacturing and technology, and serves as a social and economic hub, offering a variety of engaging local businesses and entrepreneurial opportunities. It is to preserve and honor cultural heritage by protecting historic structures and landmarks and offering vibrant cultural events, scenic open space, and recreational assets that attract both residents and visitors alike, and it is to create an inviting, safe, and secure community which prioritizes the well-being and peace of mind of all of those who call East Fishkill home. So, the document is, is divided into multiple chapters, including community character and land use, economic development, housing, agriculture, and natural resources, community services, infrastructure, transportation, and then at the very end, we have an implementation chapter, which is really a, a matrix that is supposed to keep track of how well we're achieving our objectives and goals, and it's, it's a way for us to track how we're doing and to make sure that we're completing things in a timely fashion. So, that's the way the document is structured, and I think ultimately, we don't wanna spend too much time in going through each of the individual pieces, we wanna be able to open it for public comment first, right?
I think so.
So, but if anyone has any questions, or they need a copy of the document, you can come see me in the planning office.
And it's online as well?
It's online as well, yeah, it's on, there's, if you, if you Google East Fishkill Comprehensive Plan, you'll come to a website that has the draft document on it, and we're taking public comment tonight. The town board hasn't even opened their public hearing yet, so we'll take public comment then, there'll be another public comment period that'll happen with the town board, it's not even scheduled at this point, so there's a lot of time for, for you guys to make comments.
So, one, one thing I would add is, I'd recommend, whether you've lived here your entire life, or you're a brand-new resident, I'd really recommend you read the plan, and you don't have to read it all in one sitting, because 150 pages is a lot of reading in one sitting, but if you take it a chapter at a time, it's actually pretty easy to take bite-sized chunks of it, and it, the plan synthesizes all of the current information about virtually everything you'd wanna know about the town, and then has the challenges and the, and the opportunities at the end of each chapter, telling us where we think we'd like to go and what the current thought process is as to a direction to meet the vision. With that, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll start with board members, are there any comments? I know the board members have had a chance to see this earlier, but any comments before I open it up to the public? If not, I'll open this up to public comment, so if you do have comments or questions, just come to the podium, please sign in, let us know your name, and, and take it from there.
Do you have a writing instrument that I can sign in with?
Coming right up.
Thank you. I'm Bill Brazey, I'm a relatively recent resident, this is my retirement home, year and a, two and a half years ago. I have been to both, I have not read the entire thing yet, I've been to both of the public meetings, open houses, and I've been following it to the degree I can. For tonight's meeting, I just, I just jumped to the implementation section, just, and the thing, the thing that I understand about these things, the thing, only thing that really has teeth in this, so to speak, that, that, you know, will force things to go in a different, in some direction, different or otherwise, in the future, is changes in zoning regulations. And the descriptions here are very, very vague, you know, we should, and there's a number of things, we should ensure that zoning regulations help to maintain community character, planning and zoning staff, and it goes on in that sort of vein. Without specific recommendations as to how the zoning regulations are changed, this is actually meaningless to me. So, my question is, can we get a better idea of specifically what, how zoning regulations, not that you have to follow what they say, but what they recommend you change in the zoning regulations? And, and I'll lay out one more point, as my wife insists on this, can you do anything to stop building storage units? We live up near Claude Blanchard Road in 82, and watching new, new set of zoning, of building of, of storage units being built, and she hates them, and, and we're trying to make the town look prettier, and they make the town look uglier. With that, I will finish and sign in.
So, so I'm, I'm gonna ask Michelle, actually, to jump in here and correct me where I'm wrong, but, but I think you'll see in the implementation section that there's a recommendation that a zoning committee, zoning change committee be formed, to take a look at all of the information in the plan, and they will then make recommendations that will then come before the public yet again. Am I correct about that, Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, so, there's two different ways that master plans, a lot of times, you'll see master plans include zoning. In this case, we adopted a master plan, and then we're gonna go into a zoning process, in part because the zoning both take quite a bit of time, and also because we haven't redone our zoning code in this really, really long time, and it's a huge undertaking, and we wanted to at least get the master plan completed before we went into the zoning code changes. But with regards to being more specific, I think what we tried to do here was lay out the vision for how we wanted to see the town develop, and then the zoning will have to be basically in line with the vision that we've established, and the goals, and the strategies that we've included in the document. So, specifically, whether or not we're gonna increase setbacks, or whether or not we're gonna reduce the, the acreage of lots, or whatnot, that will have, will have to come at the time we're doing the zoning, but suffice it to say that the vision right now is definitely, and we heard loud and clear through the survey, was that open space is super important, so any sort of zoning will have to take that into consideration, that people are feeling that we have some housing needs, diversity of housing that needs to be addressed here. Folks are concerned, at the committee level anyway, we're concerned that we look at housing in the extent that we have a lot of single-family housing, we have almost, we have very little multifamily housing, but our community is really in need of what we call middle housing, which is sort of the stuff that's in between multifamily and single-family, and we would like to look at that in a very strategic and calculated way, because we're concerned about overgrowing and, and adding too many housing units, and so we're looking at more like infill and more apartments above stores, rather than large, very large multifamily developments. So, those are the kinds of things that the, the plan sort of outlays, and then the zoning is supposed to make sure that we're meeting the, the vision that we're, we're speaking about and speaking to in the goals and the strategies.
Okay, next member of the public.
Hi, how are you? Adam Tinter. So, I have a couple of questions, I hope the board will entertain. So, in regards to zoning, when you talk about a zoning committee that is going to be formed, I'm just curious, we have a 2019 study on the industrial land use of, and zoning recommendations for the town, I'm just curious, is the zoning board and the master plan taking into account that already existing study?
Yeah, I think that, we did a couple of land use studies in the last, I don't know, 10 years or so, there were a couple, there was a Route 52 study, there was industrial land study, and ultimately, what was determined that, was that we really needed to take a look at our comprehensive plan, because we were looking at all these things kind of narrowly, and we wanted to make more comprehensive view of that. So, yes, all of those documents will, all of those documents were considered in the development of, of the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan basically was a larger focus, because we knew that sometimes, like you can't, we couldn't just look at industrial lands without looking at everything, because there's certainly, there has to be a location for industrial lands, and if we were only looking at those industrial lands, and we needed to, and let's say, for example, we needed to expand where we were gonna allow an industry, or reduce we were gonna allow industry, we had to look at it as, as, we had to look at the town as a whole, rather than just individually. So, ultimately, that's what we decided to do, and that's kind of why we ended up doing a comprehensive plan.
No, and I understand that that's, that this is, you know, part of the, part of the comprehensive plan, but my question is, is a zoning board gonna be taking, this formed, this non-formed zoning board, right, there's no zoning board correct that I'm aware of, right?
No, no, no.
You're not talking about the zoning board of appeals, right?
No, he's talking about...
No, 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 specifically, we just mentioned that they're, that it's part of the comprehensive plan, that there's gonna be a zoning board formed to identify areas in the comprehensive plan for zoning.
Just for clarification, I think we should refer to that as a zoning committee, because we have a zoning board of appeals, which is an official board, where if somebody's denied a permit based on a setback issue, that's a zoning board.
No, I'm talking about, like, like current and future usage, and also recommendations...
It hasn't been set up yet.
Okay, so is that committee, my question is, is that committee, I'm sure it's gonna be formed of town members, town council members, et cetera, is that going to be this plan that was already been studied in 2019, is the guidance in here going to be taken into consideration and/or taken as, hey, that's what we paid for, for a study of industrial lands, that that's what we're going to, in fact, do? I understand that we need a committee to do it, to implement this, this particular study from 2019, but I'm just curious, is that, like, we're gonna utilize this already existing recommendations?
That study was used by the committee when working cultivating balance, so the, the new comprehensive plan took some of the recommendations from that plan, but, but, and also from the Route 52 study, and tried to incorporate it into this new comprehensive plan, but it was looking at those recommendations based on town, the town as a whole, rather than those individual locations where they were, where they were more narrow, narrowly focused. So, that, those were used in developing this plan.
Okay, so that, so that zoning, these zoning recommendations were used as part of building out the comprehensive plan, in addition to the public commentary that we filled out online as part of this 150-page document?
Correct.
And by the way, I could add to this as well, that even though we can't say that they'll necessarily implement those recommendations, that study is part of the appendices to the existing plan, so if you go online, you'll see there's actually an extra 100 pages, and that study's included in that.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, the, the study that I have is approximately 51 pages, but yes, I...
Well, that and another study and some other appendices.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, and I'm not apprised of every single component for the town is working on, and, you know, I'm, I'm obviously, my concern is around this particular use, because our industrial lands, whether we expand or decrease, are going to impact residents, right? So, at the end of the day, that's, that is my context and perspective for this. My additional question is, there's another document that talks about immediate, midterm, short-term, I believe it's part of the master plan, I'm not sure where it is in there, I don't know page, I can't cite the page, but it, it outlines several projects that are already existing and/or recommendations that have been made, some are short-term, some are midterm, some are immediate. Some of the projects that I'm concerned with happen to fall under the immediate concern, but my bigger question around some of those immediate projects, and once again, I wish I could cite the page...
It's the implementation section.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know what page is. My question is, what is the, and responsibility, where does the responsibility lie in terms of these zoning regulations that are already, like, how do we mitigate the recommendation that was made to us, and already existing ongoing projects or ownership that has now taken place because some of these things hadn't been, for whatever reason, the comprehensive plan took time, et cetera, not implemented? How does that change existing projects that are already ongoing in that scenario?
Okay, so in other words, I just wanna make sure I understood what you're...
Sure, 100%, yeah, if I'm not being clear, you know, please, yeah.
There's existing projects that are currently underway in town, and you're wondering how the comprehensive plan policies might impact those projects.
Right, because some of the recommendations in this particular, in this particular study as part of that plan are counter to the projects that are ongoing, but of course, I do understand that an owner sells their property under existing, you know, zoning, and an investor, buyer, contractor, whomever, has the right to purchase that property under the existing zoning of it, and proceed with a project, they purchased it, right, it's theirs now, right? However, those, some of those projects don't fall in line with the recommendations that were actually made preceding some of those ownership changes and project applications. So, I'm just wondering, is there, you know, maybe it's attached for you, Mr. Attorney, is there anything even that the town can even do in those situations, or would do, at, you know, at reasonable cost, to implement some of those zoning recommendations to already existing projects in place? Because, you know, if I'm taking it from the other side, I'm like, hey, I bought this property, I bought it under the auspices of it being this, so I'm not happy, and town residents aren't happy, like, then no one's really happy, I'm just curious, what is the, you know, how do we mitigate that? Like, what is the plan for that?
Right now, there's already a moratorium in place for a lot of different proposals, so I think that's one way to allow the master plan to play out, and, I mean, for a lot of things that, projects that already either received permits, already received secret determinations, those things generally would be largely unaffected by the master plan in all honesty. It would be, the master plan would largely affect future projects.
Okay, so, so for like recommendations, like, and I'm speaking specifically about the Donovan Drive Lime Kiln Project, where it talks about, I think it's Zone 7 is the lime kiln zone, the industrial zone, changing the zoning of that from heavy industrial to commercial, you know, changing it from, let's say, warehouse usage to corporate park, medical offices, et cetera, things of that nature, is there anything that the town can do as part of that, you know, to mitigate an ongoing project that hasn't, you know, hasn't been built yet either, you know, let's also take that into consideration as well? You know, let's also take that into consideration as well.
I think it's sort of a complicated answer, but I think there's two things. One has to be able, has to meet current zoning because they, they are an active application in front of us right now. So they're under the current zoning. But they haven't finished seeker yet, so they're, they haven't started the seeker process. So based on what, I think, in fact, they're in the midst of that right now and we haven't seen any documentation yet. So once we see, you know, what the impacts to the wetlands are going to be, what the impacts to the traffic are going to be, that, then the planning board as the lead agency would take that information and then they would be able to make suggestions about how to modify the site plan in order to make that project have less impacts to the community. With regards to whether or not we could say it couldn't happen at all, I, like, I think that's something that, that they're under the current zoning. So there's no way that even if our master plan right now said we want to rezone that to residential, we wouldn't be able to do that, but--
It depends too, because at times, I think what you're getting at, it depends on, and it's very factual investigation, determination of whether a current applicant has vested rights to continue their project. It's this doctrine vested rights where effectively it says the government can't come in, regulate a project away. That's it in one sentence. And it's very fact-intensive and it depends on the project. But I think it's one of those things you have to balance between new, with new regulations and then you don't necessarily want to be subject to a lawsuit.
Right, so I guess--
Pull the rug out from under--
No, 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 I get that. No, no, and I think I said that, like, if I'm on the other side of that, right, like, I get it, I purchased this, this is my intention, this is how I bought it, this was, this is my plan, right? For you to change the rules of the game for me in the middle, I'm definitely going to get my attorney involved, right? I get that. My question is, let's say that project comes to a stall and that project applicant says, I'm no longer going to seek this project, it's too cost-intensive, time-intensive, et cetera, I don't see the return on my investment, I'm not sure what I'm going to do with this land, I don't know yet, right? In that particular case, when that application, I guess they pull the application for that project, is that something at that point in time then that the town, the planning board or the zoning board, you know, I don't want to use incorrect verbiage or who has authority there, but would that board and the town say, okay, well, since that project is now dead, we are now going to go back and, you know, implement the guidance given, we are going to change the zoning on that because there's no active, there is no active project? Is that a possibility? I'm just asking--
So, I mean, maybe a possibility, I have to, it's a very hypothetical question, I don't want to give you a firm answer one way or the other, just because I can't tell you for sure.
Sure.
That's why you have lawyers. They answer that question, that's why you have lawyers. They have lawyers, we have lawyers, it goes there probably.
But would it be the motive of the board, I guess, as more, like, you know, in terms of following the comprehensive plan, would that, would they take that with the, you know, with the vigor of saying, hey, this is our vision, this is our plan, this project is dead, let's, let's move forward and explore that from a legal perspective because that is what we want to do from our master plan perspective, our comprehensive plan? Would they, you know, would that be an option? Would that, would they do it?
I think it's an option, but I think it's important too, to understand that any of these actions you're talking about, whether it's approving a project or approving an alternate type of project, changing the zoning, all of those things still require a lot of public comment, a lot of public input. And as Michelle alluded to, even the project that's currently has an application before us, hasn't even really gotten very far into the whole seeker process. So we haven't gotten involved in identifying all the potential environmental issues that need to be identified. So I guess what I'm saying is, is all those questions are, in a sense, kind of premature, but I can assure you that there's going to be plenty of time for public comment as we proceed down the road, whether it's on that property or any other large project, or any alternative project to that.
Okay. Thank you.
[inaudible] My name is Lou Mahias, I live on Glen Ridge Road, and the gentleman is talking about the treetop. I'm sorry, I'll sign in, sure. He's talking about the treetop project. What studies does the town do in regards to noise levels from that place? I mean, they're right behind my house, I hear one chainsaw, it is loud as hell. The other night, I was woken up at 3:00 in the morning by truck traffic on Lime Kiln Road, I'm assuming going towards the Amazon project, and this project right, literally right behind my house, I can't imagine what that noise level is going to be like. Have you guys conducted any noise studies? And where is that project?
It would be up to that, to the applicant to conduct the noise studies, which would be reviewed by the town's own consultant, it's reviewed by the town's own consultants as well. We don't just take what the applicant says as gospel. So, and that project hasn't gotten very far yet either.
But there's a tremendous amount of work going on in that, in that piece of land right now.
Are they doing testing?
I don't know what they're doing, but the chainsaws are going like crazy and so is the back house. So what are they doing? If you don't, if you're asking me what they're doing, where does that leave us?
Well, my understanding is they're not doing anything for the past month or more.
Well, I would suggest that somebody go back there and look because chainsaws are running.
So when you see somebody back--
Yeah, excuse me, and when would you say the last time you heard the chainsaw?
Yesterday afternoon.
Okay, fine.
So then, call, call the code enforcement when that happens, call the building department.
Call us.
Call the building department. And they'll go out and investigate and if they're doing work they're not supposed to be doing, they're going to stop work order.
I mean, the, the, one chainsaw is so damn loud, I can't imagine what a million square feet of tractor trailer noise is going to be 24/7.
So it is, a noise study would be required as part of the seeker documentation that they would have to do for the, for which they're currently working on, there is a noise study included in the scope, they do have to address--
When will that be conducted?
I don't, they haven't submitted anything to us yet.
Has anybody decided to take noise level readings now while that one chainsaw is growing like crazy?
They're, they're not supposed to be using chainsaws back there right now, so--
No, I understand that, so if you're saying that they are, we'll have sent somebody up tomorrow.
Certainly cutting something--
We have an environmental monitor out there and everything as far as I understand is on pause, so if you're telling me that's not the case, we'll have somebody out there tomorrow.
I mean, I don't want to trespass on their property, but there's something, certain something's going on there.
No, I'm not saying to do, as soon as you hear something, call the building department.
Okay.
Next member of the public.
So this might have already been answered before. Regarding, there's kind of the ongoing tension between landowner rights and community rights, rights is perhaps not the right, the correct term here, but is there something in either the master plan or town code somewhere that would discuss how those conflicts are remedied? You know, because that might, to my mind, it would go in the implementation section for giving, I've not gotten through all 145 pages yet either. But I'm curious because I think, my sense is that if there was something written ahead of time to provide guidance, or even just high-level frameworks, since that's all the plan is, is a high-level framework and kind of a decision support mechanism, that there could be some way to articulate in a section that says, explains, sometimes it is the property owner who is saying, I'm going to develop this project, I don't care what the adjacent concerns are. I get that this committee would handle that, but my sense is that there's a communication lapse or not clear guidance at the beginning about if you're a landowner and here's what you have to do, if you're the affected community member, here's what the process is to push back or have some influence on the process. Is that something that could be--
I mean, I can, I'll take it, try it and then I'll give it to the attorney, but I think that ultimately, that also could be something that could be modified in zoning. For example, the zoning has public hearing requirements about, like, if a project is proposed, this is what has to happen, you have to submit these documents and then you have to do a, you have to do a public notice 20 days ahead of time. So if there was something else that the community identified that they felt was necessary in order to feel, to understand a project better, for example, or to get more information about a project before it was built, then we could potentially add that to zoning, understanding that there are also legalities to that. So we, you know, there are certain things we can and can't require. And, I mean, it's certainly worth looking at the way the current, like, site plan regulations are written and see if there's anything that would help property owners understand the process better and then know when there's, when it would be the best place to make public comment and when they could hear about projects coming in, that kind of thing. I do think, one of the things, and I think this is important to know, we talked about this a lot in the committee, I think it was between the 2010 census and the 2020 census when East Fishkill went from what is essentially categorized as a rural community into what is categorized as a suburban community and it's based on demographics, right? So what we're facing in East Fishkill right now is sort of this, this thing that maybe Worcester faced 40 years ago or whatever, of, you know, you've got land, a place that used to have a lot of rural land and when people were building their homes, they weren't really bothering that many people because there weren't that many people to bother around them. And now you're seeing land use conflicts more and more because of the fact that we have, you know, higher density here and we're starting to become more suburbanized, basically. And so, you know, it's a good and bad problem, right? It's, it means you have a successful community that people want to live in, but it's also makes it difficult because you do start to have, you start to see conflicts like noise and lighting and things that are typical of a more urbanized environment and that people in particular that haven't, have lived here for a very long time, like 40 years, are not used to seeing. And so, you know, a lot of times the response to that, right, is to regulate. And, you know, there's pros and cons with that as well. And, and you're right. And that's, that's sort of really was talked about a lot and why kind of we have the title we have, which is cultivating balance and trying to understand what, you know, what to balance, how to balance and where to go with that balancing. And I can assure you that this was talked about quite a bit at the committee level and I think there was a clear understanding that we're sort of at a precipice right now with our community. And there were a lot of, lots of concerns about maintaining community character and also enabling us to move forward and still have economic development and make sure that we did, we do still prosper. So those things were definitely spoken of and, and we tried to, to address those in the goals and policies. But if there's something that's missing and you feel like that's something we need to speak stronger on, you should absolutely make those comments and then we can go back to the town board with those comments and they, they may make a more specific recommendation if it, if it's something that they feel strongly about.
And I'm thinking also perhaps from communicating, my background tends to be communications marketing, which is sometimes a good thing, sometimes a bad thing. But in one sense, by the time the community comes to this kind of meeting, we have no, we're talking to you guys, we're not talking to the other side, the other side of the particular issue versus, I'm the property owner who wants to put a warehouse on my, on my farm because I'm done with farming and here are all the adjacent neighbors who don't want that to happen. Like some type of working group outside of this official moderated, recorded, I mean, record that session by all means, but I'm curious if there's some consideration for different communication modalities and more collaborative modalities rather than, the plan's almost done, we're going to start implementing, you know, it goes live in June, implementation begins slowly but surely, you know, but we've got questions about kind of enforcement of things and I get that code enforcement, zoning enforcement, that's all there. But might there be some consideration of community working groups, right? In extension to, in addition to these official groups? So I just ask the committees to consider that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next member of the public. Anyone else? There we go.
Hello, good evening, I'm in at Galloway and, I'm sorry, I do have a bit of a cold, but I thought this was important to come out for. I'm actually living in historic Wicopee and part of your program is to protect historic districts and we've been working under save Wicopee, you probably remember the gas station situation with Stewarts, thank goodness we were able to save the general store. Podium's rolling. The effects of Amazon have been really quite large for our community. And one of the problems, and I was just looking today, there are 18-wheelers that consistently, and I know there are signs that say no large trucks on Fishkill Hook Road, but that is completely disregarded. And the police have been called and people are aware of this, but several 18-wheelers went down. Now, they get lost sometimes from Amazon, they don't even know exactly where they're going, they come around that island that we have going out Hook Road. So there are a couple of problems with this. One of the visions is to save historic districts, but traffic plays a big role in house preservation. So to speak directly, two years ago, I had my whole stone foundation taken apart and rebuilt to the tunes of tens of thousands of dollars. I'm not talking about a little bit of money, I'm talking a lot of money, a lot of money that most people would just have tried to pooh-pooh, you know, get rid of the house and, you know, run the other way and not deal with it. But I really do believe in preservation and we've lived there a very long time since 1987. And several engineers, and we had engineers who worked with us, specifically said that the traffic and the vibrations from heavy traffic in historic districts literally shakes the foundations because they're stone right underneath these homes. And once these foundations go, if you don't have a lot of money, I'm not saying that I do, but it's very hard to save these homes. So my personal feeling is that Fishkill Hook Road, if we want, one of the visions is that people would have access to see what the hamlet looked like and it's basically completely preserved. Unfortunately, we lost two houses in the last few years. But what's very important is that that road should be closed, Fishkill Hook Road. You actually could bring in students who could walk without getting hit by a car or a truck, you know, to see these historic homes that we have and that are being preserved and have, in my case, been lovingly preserved, you know, for almost 40 years now. This is not just a light, you know, topic. When these trucks come by and you feel the vibrations and you know the engineers are telling you that your foundation is, you know, shaking, I mean, I reinforced everything, everything is now, but it's over time that this happens. You're not going to preserve these old homes anymore under these situations. So I just want to speak into that. So yes, Amazon is done, right? Everyone dealt with the lighting issues and the pollution issues and, and all of that. But this issue is another piece of, a result of a finished project. This gentleman was speaking about the noise level and it's very noisy, it is very noisy. And then, you know, 52 and it's just so much more traffic than there was 40 years ago and it's extremely noisy and they cut down all the trees and it's just right there, I was so happy when the trees grew, but that's another situation. I want the board to really think about, this comprehensive planning board, we've been working on just trying to get historic Wicopee, the sign fell down three years ago, I called up, I have it in my shed, you can come pick it up, I can't fit it in my car, but there's no historic Wicopee signs, it's all, I mean, I cut the grass on the, on the green space, it's not my property, I've been trying to buy it for many, many years. If you're really serious about historic districts, we really need the support of the town to help preserve them. They're not going to be preserved just by one individual or a few people who live on a block, no matter how much money they have, because there are other larger urban-type problems that creep in that you can't control. And so I want us to really consider that, considering now that Amazon is built and now this is a trickle-down effect of all of that. So I just said my piece, thank you for the time, for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go quick because I know we're over time. Can I talk and write at the same time? I don't know. Anyway, all right. So my name is Diame, I just moved here recently, so thanks for having me. And I just have a couple of, oh, a couple of these to like suggest. I'm one of the youngest people in this room, which is kind of cool. And I just, I think I have a question about the timeline of the zoning committee. I'm a young person and so I'm like, y'all probably going to look at me and be like, you have time, don't worry, relax, but there's so much urgency, right, in like climate change and all the things that are happening all over the world. And so I'm just curious about like, yeah, considering the timeline-- And so, I'm just curious about, like, yeah, considering the timeline for the zoning committee, how effective, and like, just making sure you have an ample amount of resources to facilitate those conversations. I would suggest investing in, like, conflict resolution, maybe getting a facilitator or mediator to kind of help soothe the differences and the, like, tension that people were naming earlier. Because, yeah, the more populated a place gets, the more opinions and the more entitlement people feel, right, to, to whatever, contribute to the vision of something. So, yeah, and then I think that, of course, like, rubs up against what the first gentleman or second gentleman was saying around, how do current projects actually implement the future, right? If the comprehensive plan is not going to take effect until 2030, but we have climate change right on our back right now, how, how is that actually helping any of us? We already see a lot of flooding issues, right? We already see the wildfires, right? The volunteer, what is it, volunteer fire department? You know, I'm like, oh, my God, let's distribute some of the police department budget to help the fire department. It's like, wow, to me, that they're volunteers, but whatever. Again, young, and maybe there are reasons behind that. The other piece, I will say, that's really, really important to me in the line of climate change is, like, the green infrastructure. How do we encourage and actually create zoning that builds the future we want to see? For example, on my block, beautiful, big block, I live on three-quarters of an acre, which is an enormous amount of land for one human being. People are not out on their lawns, and so I just think we can consider, they don't use it for playing, there's not, like, kids playing soccer or throwing a frisbee, or like, there's literally no one out there ever, okay? We need to consider making lawns smaller and kind of, I'm going to use a strong word, mandating meadows and flowers and trees and shrubbery, because we cannot continue on this, like, fake American perception of, like, lawns are the way to be, like, this is, that's a very, like, old perception of what, like, green space means. The amount of noise that y'all are referring to, all I hear in the summer months is, brrr, brrr, right, of the cutting and the mowing and the mowing and the mowing. That is not as carbon emissions, period, point blank. And so, I just want to emphasize the importance of, like, being considerate of what people want to do with their land where they live, where they wake up every morning, and also the needs of the future generations that are to come, including pollinators and agricultural land for us to grow our food and eat well. All those things that I know are important to all of us here. I think that's it. That's my list. Yeah, I made it through. Thank you so much for listening, and I look forward to all the rest of our conversations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
My name is Frank, and I have, I'm a 35-year resident of East Fishkill. Sometimes I'm proud to be that, and sometimes I'm not. What I ask for this plan is that we have more than two public hearings. I was at the town board meeting and said, we're going to have one maybe May or June. It's not fair to the community to only have two sessions. I think you have to broaden it, you have to broadcast it, put it out on the, on the electronic board. We don't publicize it enough, it's unfair and unjust to have only two public hearings. I really, really ask, you urge the town board to open it up more, this is a, you know, it's taken 20 years for us to get to here, to have two public meetings is really, it's really unfair to us. And thank you.
And thank you. I, I agree with you, and what we will do is adjourn this public hearing until the next meeting. So, we'll give everybody an opportunity to come back in next meeting. We'll also receive, we're willing to receive written comments. So, anybody that has some additional comments, or your neighbors who would prefer maybe to write an email rather than come in and speak, please tell them to, feel free to, to send something in. Any other comments? Yes?
Could I just ask to clarify a question from my previous?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So, I just, I, I heard what you guys said about some of the questions being hypothetical and premature, but I'm just curious if the town is going to make provisions for, as projects either become complete and move forward, or they don't, are there provisions made so that, especially projects that meet resistance, right? There's several projects that meet resistance in the town right now, kind of going back to what we were talking about, community, community rights and neighbor rights versus landowner rights. And I get it, as we become more densely populated, like, I did not grow up in this area, I grew up in an area that was more densely populated, so I'm really well-versed in those issues. But do we, as a town, collectively whole here, make provisions so that projects that meet resistance, that may not come to fruition, that we change those things as to not repeat the same cycle again of another investor coming in with more money, more ability to move forward, and then you have, we kind of go, repeat the same process, right? Like, the town repeats the same process on their end, having to hear, you know, either similar plans from a, from a new person, and the towns, citizens become equally upset that this is occurring again. So, as projects either come to fruition and move on, and we can't do anything about those, you know, i.e. Amazon, et cetera, or projects fall off, are we making provisions to be able to say, okay, well, we're not going to repeat that, because that obviously received town resistance, that person, that investor, that landowner didn't have the resources to move forward, so we're not going to repeat that cycle again, though we are going to look at, do they make any, I mean, I think my question should, is really clear, do we make provisions for that or plans for that?
So, I'll try to, I'll attempt.
I mean, I can think of a specific example, too. So, the Twin Creeks matter, a specific example where decades ago, there was one zoning in place, then the zoning changed, and now they're back with a new proposal, and there's, it's called a friendly disagreement between the town and the developer about what exactly they're entitled to. And they want to be under a prior zoning, and we think that it doesn't necessarily fall the way that they think that it falls. So, um, so the town does think about this and has thought about these sort of issues for decades, they unfortunately keep getting messier and messier.
No, I think that's a great example. So, there's something where they, where they had one zoning, and during their ownership, zoning was changed. And so, in theory, the town does have some leverage there to implement the master plan that we've all answered questions on, come here, you know, set our concerns about. So, that's actually something really positive that I'm hearing. So, that, that's kind of where I was getting at, like, and so, thank you very much for citing that example. I think that, you know.
I think the, I think the zoning is going to, what a parcel is ultimately zoned is going to depend on, it's, it's going to be part of the master plan process, it's not going to depend on an individual site or an individual application. So, I mean, it's trickier when you've got an application in front of you and you're looking to rezone an area, because, but there are multiple tools and ways that the zoning can be written to potentially accommodate a use and still maintain other uses for the area surrounding it. But it all has to be done in compliance and following the policies that are set forth in the comprehensive plan. So, I mean, I can give you an example, and I'm not going to, if somebody comes in, right, and there's an application, let's just say they're in the process of constructing something, and we decide that that use is a really difficult use in that location and the properties around it, which are also zoned the same thing as that particular site, for example, we might say, you know what, it's not a good idea to have, easiest to use in industry, an industrial land use there, because it's really close to a lot of residential property. So, maybe we need to consider creating some sort of transition zone there, or rezoning it altogether, or creating some zoning regulations that might add buffering to a site or something like that. And that absolutely can be done, but we can't necessarily, it, it, as the attorney was saying, it can't, it depends on where in the project, or where in the process the project is, whether or not you can actually impact the actual site that the project is happening on, okay?
Totally understandable. No, and I hope my question wasn't saying that. Like, my, my question was simply, like, I understand these projects, I mean, I think we even heard here tonight, like, a parking lot, it's a lengthy project, it's expensive project. These, these applications don't guarantee that that investor gets the usage that they anticipate that they want to, you know, get a return on their investment. I get that. I think my question really just geared towards, as those things either come to a stall and that person's not proceeding, I just, as a resident, as somebody familiar with some of these things, you know, it's just a matter of time before the next person comes in with more money, more resources, and decides if they're going to fight, and then all the, you know, all the people here who have been upset by that project, we repeat that whole process over again, and ultimately, I just don't think that's a good use of anybody's time, you know, or of the master plan.
Yeah, I don't think that legally we can stop somebody from trying to do it.
No, but I think what he's trying to say, I think it's important to note that we don't have endless applications coming before us, nor do we have the ability to pick and choose the applications that we want to come before us, right? So, the best that we can do at this point is zone and target what we think would be the best development, redevelopment, infill for certain areas, and then have them come to us. If that makes sense.
I, I, no, I 100% in agreement, understand it, I comprehend the whole thing. My question is, existing plans, whether it's Twin.
Creeks.
Twin Creeks, or Treetop, or whatever, as those projects, and in the case of Twin Creeks, that already has, that answered my question to, to a large portion. But my question was really, like, does that, do we look to implement zoning changes if a project that's already in application is no longer forward in application? That was really my clarifying question, and I was asking the board if they made provisions and plans for that, and I think that question was answered. So, I don't think I need to really clarify anything else, and I don't think I need anything else clarified to me, I don't think. Okay? I appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, then, as I indicated earlier, we'll adjourn this public hearing to our May 20th meeting, and in the meantime, we will accept any written comments or questions you might have. So, could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of the comments from everybody that was here tonight, and look forward to seeing you again.